Did you ever see the front of the program that we paid for?
The what?
The front of the Indiana Festival Program.
Yes.
I bought a copy.
Yeah, I've got one of them.
Ready.
Okay. I'll join me in a moment of prayer. Lord, just thank you for this day. Thank you for all that you do for us. Lord, just be with us as we conduct county business, that we can do it to the best of our ability. Lord, just thank you for each and every one that's here and provide safety and travel home. Lord, thank you for all your blessings in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, so up first, approval of minutes. Are there any comments or corrections needed? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve them as written and read. So move. Okay, Karen, I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Randall. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, Ron is abstaining because he wasn't here last month.
He is what?
Oh, you're abstaining too? Okay. That's true, you are not. Okay, but they still stand as approved. Okay, next up, prosecutor Jared Holt's call for the additional appropriation final approval.
Yeah, I was here last week asking for that. That was, I don't know how much you money, hear about that again, but that money was initially approved again in 2024 for the flop cameras and then Helen made me aware of the fact that I had to come back and ask for it again because we never received a bill in 2024 for those. So I came back and asked for that money to be re-appropriated so that when I finally get a bill, when I finally get cameras that work, then we'll have money to pay for them. As George and I, you probably heard, we still don't have any cameras up and running yet. But I anticipate that will happen sometime this calendar year, so I will need money to pay for that when that does happen.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion for final approval.
Motion.
Brian, I need a second. Second by Jerry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next up, updated job descriptions through the prosecutor's office.
Yeah, so that, this process started a couple of months ago. I think it had something to do, we were looking at the budget issue for Amanda and the tier system. It came to light that Marvin let me know that actually he didn't have just a couple of our job descriptions for our office. So I went back, took a look, and we had several that Marvin didn't have, so we decided just to do, at his suggestion, to revise everybody's job description in my office. So I did that over the course of several weeks, sent it to Marvin for review, and Marvin was working on that, and he mentioned last week, or maybe before last, he had that on the agenda for this week, and then he had that unfortunate thing happen last week. But he has communicated with me that he has reviewed them, made a couple of small corrections. I looked at them, they look fine to me. That's where I'm going with that is now the county will have all of our job descriptions for every job in our office.
I got two comments on that, Kelly. I wasn't able to review all those because we didn't, I didn't get it till 8:30 last night, and I just went like about a minute to see if there was anything out there, and I was like, I can't review 13 of these. Plus, the ones that we got didn't have any markups on them, you couldn't tell what had changed. I would like to see the ones that had the markups. So.
Okay. We'll have to ask Marvin for those, I'm assuming, but I just wanted to make sure that the one that brought all of this to our attention was... Where is it at? It wasn't the legal secretary. It's the office administrator, the legal for Circuit Court, is that the one?
Yes, that's Amanda's position.
Okay.
And that has been Office Administrator's position for a long time.
Okay.
Marvin, you have a copy of it, but that I think is what prompted.
Okay. Okay. So.
And if you all want to push it off, that's fine. I had even suggested that to Marvin, we didn't think that it would be necessary to push it back, but I understand your concern. I didn't get the reviews till this morning when I came in, and I actually had to ask him because I think I would include it on the copies and the email that you guys got. But I got them and I did review them.
Okay. Okay.
Again, I don't think you'd anticipate having the issue he had.
Right, exactly, so, yeah, so we'll, I guess we'll table that, I'll need a motion.
Of course, I do have the... Do you foresee with these updated job descriptions, are you coming back for funding changes, salary changes?
No, I did this.
All of these are what their current status is now?
Yes, with one exception. I did this because Marvin asked me to do it. I didn't do it because I'm wanting to try to get money. Except for I think Amanda's tier thing needs to be correct, and I was going to discuss that at our...
During budget hearings?
Budget hearing.
Yeah.
But there is one that you will see on there that is also a part of a budget request that I'm making, and it will be slightly different, and it will cost the county, I say a couple more dollars, literally a couple more dollars. Pam Barnhill's retiring from the receptionist position on child support side. We've needed another case manager for a long time, just happened to ask for space and monetary reasons. What Steph and I came up with was a request for that position to be, whenever that position is filled, to make a receptionist slash case manager, where that person will have a small case manager load. They won't have the full-size load as the other three, but they can actually do some case management as well. And when you look at what it will cost to start that person, it's literally within just maybe $200 of what Pam is making this year. So that would be, that would be a change because that was historically just a receptionist position, but now it'd be receptionist slash case manager, where we can get the ability to help spread out our cases for within a couple hundred dollars of what we're paying Pam now.
Okay, so not the... Okay, so receptionist, child support, case manager, title 4D?
Yes, that's the one. I just also wanted it as just the...
Receptionist, child support.
In case you guys don't go along with that.
Okay. Okay.
Probably make a motion, Kelly, that we table it until next, and I would like to see the copies with the markup so that we can tell what changed.
Okay, so you're making a motion to table job descriptions until next month?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will make note of these for budget, and the same with Amanda, so we'll know those, okay.
Just one clarification. The receptionist, child support is what Pam is now?
Yes.
And the receptionist, child support, case manager is where you want to go?
Is what I'm going to ask for because she is retiring in, I believe, February of '26.
Gotcha.
And I just saw that as an opportunity to get another case manager without really having to create a new position, it's just additional responsibilities for the receptions that will come in.
Okay.
And again, not a full caseload like the other three, but the ability to have some caseload to do that alone.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Richard Nichols, for veterans, additional appropriation.
Yes, thank you for doing this. This is the third year I ran a veteran resource fair at Westgate Academy. Been well-received the last two years, and the last two years, we helped 369 veterans on-site, which is high numbers for the VA whenever they do their resource fairs, and they're really happy with it, they want to do it at least one more time. And I've partnered with the O N B F W Post 9627 for the last two years, and they've made a donation of $2,000 to cover the rent this year once again. So I'm asking for permission to advertise for that, and we'll get it done on October the 22nd, which is a Wednesday, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., and we'll have all the resources that we can muster.
October what?
October 22nd.
Okay.
Where's that going to be?
Westgate Academy. Right there in the building.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion to advertise. Okay, Ron made the motion to advertise. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Randall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, Lily, is she here yet? Okay, good deal.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Lily Rush, and I'm the HHS Health and Human Science educator in the CED 402 Extension. And I did work with Marvin on a proposal that we would like to do. He said that he, I don't think he gave it to you till today possibly. It is for our office manager role, and I'd like to propose an expansion of the current office manager role to include additional responsibilities that could help with and continue growth and effectiveness of our programs. These added duties would directly support three of our educators. It would help streamline our operations and increase capacity to serve more families in the community from preschool age all the way to our senior population. So in that document that you should have received, it says the position of corporate office manager. If you read the description, it's just kind of in italics. It has programs, services, duties identified in the duties section, were assigned previously to an intern, and for the foreseeable future, will be performed by the office manager. The office manager would be compensated for these services in the form of an annual stipend, paid biweekly at each payroll cycle. The stipend is not intended to alter the base pay of the office manager and may be discontinued at such time as a program service duties, or again performed by an intern or assigned to another personnel. So we feel like, and those duties, if you want to look at those, are on the second page under program services, and it lists the extra duties that the office manager would be... We feel like this would be a better use of the funds. We didn't have an internship here, and not that we didn't try, we did, but instead of just using that funds for just one person for a very short amount of time, we could now, we could use the funds over a whole year of time in helping three educators. We just feel like it's a better use of the money. And then, and then this, again, these will be done throughout the year. There are no extra funds, that we're not taking money from anything else, but they're already allocated, already there. We just feel like there could be a lot, we could, we're doing more programs, and we're teaming up in our educators, but we're trying to get out of the aisle by school corporations. We have things for this and next year, and to have the office manager to help us with programming and planning those things, and just making us be more effective and reach more people, we feel like this would be a big plus.
So is it your intent not to try to get an intern then? Like, I felt those were usually things we had just in the summer, the interns.
Right, no, we, with, kind of how things, 4H has, used to be a lot more, you know, paperwork and now it's online more. They don't, the interns don't get to work with educators as much during the summer because of, our programming is a little bit down during the summer because we are helping the fair and different things, schools are out, so we just feel like this would just be a better solution for our needs versus the intern.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask it different, in a different way. You're going to sunset the intern program?
No, there were, it's still there, it is still there, it's not going away. It's just this right now would be a stipend for the office manager to pick up and do these extra duties using the intern funds. If we, you know, we feel like that person, the office manager doesn't want to do those, or they would get out of the job and it could go back into an intern, it's not that, that verbiage is not changing, it will still say intern. Just the funds to compensate the office manager for doing those extra things would come from intern monies.
Who's, who's filling the office manager role currently?
Samantha Grimmer.
And is her current job title, description, do you know, does it say office manager?
Yes. It does.
Again, I'll kind of repeat what Karen said a little bit earlier. I'd like more time to look at this against what's happening currently. Is there a job description in the policy system here on intern?
There is, yes, there is one, I don't have a pair with you.
That's fine.
Yes, there is.
I can get a copy of it. Typically, who would be an intern? Some college student?
Yes.
Working on a degree in...
Yeah, it could be...
Agribusiness, sciences, something like that?
Yep. We had one, and it wasn't going to work out for her. She took on another job that was more, working more in a specific area for her. She was crops and that kind of thing, and she didn't really want to, she found that, she took that job over this one.
Can you tell me what the pay was? What the, what the financial obligation was when we had an intern?
It's $4,500, but it's so many hours that they have to...
No, it's fine. Total, max they could get is $4,500 for the summer, and that's what you're looking at growing into the office manager's job, $4,500.
With all, with extra responsibilities. That would be...
Yeah, I get that.
Yes.
That's if they do the job of the intern. That's not all the time. So this is, you're classifying that as stipend?
Yes, the stipend for taking on the job responsibilities, the extra duties that were listed in the, under program services. Those are the extra job responsibilities. Some of those, kind of, the intern role and these kind of are interchangeable. This is actually more, more things. They would go out to the schools with us, they can help us with calling schools and setting up programs for us, and, let me see, help with workshops, and getting educational materials, compiling, helping with evaluation processes when we come back and we've done a program, and we have to put that information back into the system to show what we've done. And it wouldn't just be me, it would be HHS, Ag, and 4H and youth leadership educators. There's three educators.
So you're thinking about the office manager going out with you to...
Sometimes, not, not always.
How many hours out of the office would we be talking about because...
Not, I mean, I, I don't know how much we would do that if they, if we need, like, let's say we partner sometimes with the other educators at some point, and for some reason, let's say one of the educators couldn't go with me, and I needed to pull her and say, hey, can you go with me instead? That's a possibility. I would say most of the time, they're going to be in the office more doing things than possibly out, but let's say she wanted to do some, the 4H educator wanted to promote 4H, and she went ahead, so hour-wise, I don't think they would be out of the office that often, that it would cause a problem with their other responsibilities that they are before the current office manager position. I do not see them taking away from that at all. Do the answer push things?
I'm going to look at this some more, but my first cut on it is, you're wanting to add jobs to the office manager role that belong to an intern, yet not sunset and give up the intern program. I would rather it see that there's a line item in this job description for the office manager that says, in the absence of an intern, the office manager can fill that job description and get that stipend. That's it. Because adding all this stuff, I'm just saying, let me finish. We're going to get five years down the road, and nobody's going to remember that we added all this stuff in here because it comes out of the intern budget, and if they don't do it because we have an intern, then the patient go to the office manager. And we'll end up giving the office manager a $4,500 increase for three or four years in a row, and then all of a sudden, an intern shows up, and nobody goes back in and takes it away from the office manager. That's my take on it. I don't, the only, Lily, I don't know you. If you'd have met me in the hallway a while ago, I wouldn't have known who you were. This is not personal.
No.
But my function here is to control taxpayer dollars.
Right.
And when I see job changes, the only, the only control I have over a job change like this is budgetary. That's it. So I really don't like seeing you adding $4,500, $4,500 to the current office manager's income by throwing all this stuff in their job description. That seems to me like you're creating a different job. Now, if you say the office manager can, from time to time, fulfill the duties of the intern job description and get that stipend, that's different. Because that means there's no intern, and it clearly still ties it to us having an intern. Now, if you sunset the intern, say we'll never have another intern, and we want to change this job permanently, but what I'm hearing is that you want both. You want the office manager to do a bunch of work if you don't have an intern, but if we give somebody who wants to do an intern job, you want the freedom to do that too. And then, how are you going to divvy up the money? Is the office manager going to get a thousand of it, and you're going to pay $3,500 to the intern because you had to have some help, or whatever? It gets a little gray and a little murky there.
I'll just say, this is, I wanted a program manager. That's what I wanted the title to be, program manager, because that's what they would be doing, they would be helping us with programs. And financially, we don't know where to come up with those funds without, well, we just have the internship because we didn't have an intern this year, not that there couldn't be, but there's just not sometimes enough work sometime for them to do sometimes in the summer. It's more busy work, it's really not a true internship. You know, when I think of internships, you're with an educator, and you're getting to do programs with them, and it's actually a real experience. They're just doing 4H and office work kind of things, which I guess is, it's fine, but there could be a lot more to it, is what I'm saying. I wanted this to be more of a, the title that the office manager would have would be a program, like assistant, so a program assistant to the educators, and using the funds from the intern monies for that, but...
And see, I haven't, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I have a problem with having both on there. You know, either she's going to do it, and there's not going to be an intern because, because of budgetary things, because who's going to say when she's doing it and when she's not? Either we have, either we have it all in here, and she does it all the time, and we don't have an intern, or we have the intern and she doesn't get paid the stipend. I mean, I don't think you can do both.
Man, that's why I said, by adding all of these job descriptions and this verbiage, you're kind of laying it on the office manager. But yet, if an intern shows up and you start using an intern to do some of these jobs, and, you know, there, I don't know how many tasks you have here, let's say there's five, looks like maybe five or six on the program services. Office manager continues to do two, and the intern picks up three of them, now you've got a disparity here.
Right, right, and I don't, I don't want that to happen. I think when he, when we talked about this, the office manager will be compensated for these services in the form of an annual stipend, and then the stipend is not intended to alter the base pay and may be discontinued at such time as a program services duties, or again performed by an intern or assigned to other personnel. Like, so it's saying though, it can be taken away from that person. I understand what you're saying to me too. I'm just trying to get...
But a stipend is generally a all or nothing.
Right, well, yes, it is.
That's what it means, is that you're going to get it, you know, for, there's a couple of positions here that get stipends. They get the stipend for the year if they're in the position. And so saying that you're going to be, you're going to get this stipend of $4,500 and do intern work that's in here, and an intern shows up, and they decide to jerk the $4,500 back, I don't think your office manager's going to be very happy.
Well, I guess, right, I, but is there, I mean, I guess I'm asking you, is there a way to do this, that if we could do it, possibly meaning...
I'm just saying, yeah.
Verbiage with, I mean...
Don't give the tasks. Put the tasks in the intern.
Okay.
Job description. This is the, this is the job description of the intern, and then just say that when the office manager fills the role of intern, they will get the stipend. Not do any tasks or anything because that gets mixed up. If there's not an intern, they can fill the role of an intern, I think. If there's an intern, they're not going to fill the role of an intern, you're going to want that money to go to that intern. Or, in all seriousness, sunset the intern program. Just do a way with it. Put the tasks in here and ask to increase this person's job title and pay by $4,500.
Yeah, because then if you end up getting an intern, you know, come back and ask for appropriation for the intern, because my, my thought is, it's going to get too confusing for payroll to like, okay, now we're not going to pay her this money.
And I'm okay with that. I mean, I don't, again, the intern with 4H online, things have changed, it's not a lot of paperwork like it used to be, it's a lot simpler, there's just not as many things for them to do, and again, we don't have a lot of education programs going on during, like, the time that they're there. They get a little bit, but they wouldn't get it for, like, if they, if they came in beginning of January and stayed till May.
Is there not, my question would be this too, is there not a way to do an internship, you know, throughout the year? And what I'm coming from is because, you know, sometimes you have kids, for example, college students that do internship at the hospital, and they can work there, like, on their breaks, for instance, like Christmas break, or spring break, or fall break.
Right.
Plus summer stuff, so then you could still have an intern.
Possibly, it's just...
You know, but I agree with them, we need to look at the verbiage on this a little bit differently and see how you want to do that.
How, how long is an internship typically? When do they start and when do they end? When they come and when do they go?
Whenever they get through with college, usually it's May, mid, you know, May till about, until very, July, end of July, August. It's not very long, I mean, it's a short amount of time.
Yeah, and I'm looking at, how long has the stipend been $4,500?
This is information that I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Because I just started in October.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking that is, you know, if they come mid-May, okay, and then they leave the first week of August, or they come...
Get back to college.
Yeah, June, July, August. You've got about three months there. $4,500, you're paying somebody $1,500 for the month. That may have been okay for college students in the past. I don't think you're going to find that. I think that's maybe, you just mentioned you had the intern, and then they went and took a job.
Somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not...
I don't think it's probably because the work is that difficult, I think it's probably because they need the money.
But interns used to get paid hourly, they didn't get the full stipend. It wasn't ever considered a stipend, it was just an hourly rate.
And they had to submit an hourly...
It was, it was turned in on the pay voucher every two weeks. I don't recall how much it was, but it was an hourly rate.
That's mine, my thought for the, for the stipend, service stipend, for, she needs to allocate, the office manager need to allocate how many hours they spend, especially if they're going to have an intern part of the year, and office manager to do that part of the year, they're going to have to allocate how many hours they spend on that. I, I think there was a lot, a lot of work that needs to go.
Yeah.
I make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your help and your work.
Yes.
We'll get something hammered out.
All right, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Who has a second on that?
Me.
Randall. Okay, up next, I'm going to call them up.
I gave you all a copy, see, I put you on the table report, so I have to go through and tell the state of Indiana what we're spending the money on, and what category it goes under me. So if you look at page three... So, if you look at page three, you can see expenditures and then it'll say qualifying strategy for exhibit E. I have to put in what qualifying strategy fits underneath for the restricted funds. And then they ask during the unrestricted funds, if there is a qualifying strategy to go ahead and add that in. So, I did that on two of the areas that we could give a qualifying strategy. One of the areas, the HITS training, we give a qualifying strategy for that. So, the KIC, I think we could. So, that's just the update. I just wanted you guys to see it.
Hi. I have a question.
Uh-huh.
What does HITS stand for?
I don't remember. It was something the prosecutor's office. It has to do with, like, training the officers for traffic stops.
You get tied to city traffic.
There you go.
Stops for basically drug enforcement.
Gotcha.
And, and so...
Okay. Gotcha. And one other question?
Okay.
I noticed there were two different, you, you annotated up here that to malproceed and then the malproceed, both unrestricted and unrestricted. You had a disparity there?
Yes. So, there was one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars, I think is the difference that was deposited into the restrict, the unrestricted that should have been deposited into the restricted. We found that discrepancy, so it's on the report.
And you don't fix it? You don't go back?
They haven't said anything to me about fixing it. And I'm kind of waiting to see whether or not they want me to do anything with that or not before we jump in that.
Okay.
If they don't say anything, I'm...
I think we're about eleven hundred and forty-four dollars of a hundred and eighty sum, or four hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Just more work for everybody else.
Good.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next up, Sheriff, additional appropriation.
Good afternoon, Councilor.
Good afternoon.
So, yeah, the first one is, we'd like to advertise for four thousand dollars in additional appropriation. This comes from selling a police car with town of Worthington. It was car that we were getting ready to decommission and sell and they were, they lost one in the tornadoes. We worked out an agreement that was beneficial for both of us. So, Marvin got all the paperwork ironed out, agreed on the sign. They now have the vehicle and they've paid for it. And we'd like to advertise for that four thousand dollars to put back into our Vehicle Repair Fund. Had several big repairs this year that were a little bit more than normal, so we could use the money there. I make a motion.
Okay. Ron made a motion to approve, to advertise. Second, second by Karen. All in favor, say aye.
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 And we're also requesting final approval on, for our medical pays for April, May, and June, for the amount of seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents.
No, we're good.
Okay. Ron made a motion to approve that.
Second.
Second by Randall. All in favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay. Up next, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello. Hello.
First, we're seeking an additional appropriation to the head of funds for nineteen hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. And this is for the camera and laptop in the new conference room at the Event Center. Since all of our meetings have to be broadcast now by the new state statute, as several meetings take place in that conference room throughout the months, and we had to have a setup to help to broadcast those.
Any questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion to advertise the nineteen sixty-nine thirty-five.
So, move.
Motion made by Brian. Jerry seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 The next is seeking the appropriation from the General Fund of twenty-five thousand dollars for the EMA Director's position. As you, I think everybody knows, we have advertised for that position. Roger is gonna retire, but he's, he's gonna have enough time that we're gonna have a payout on that. And we don't have anything budgeted for a new hire in that transition period. So...
So, this is not gonna add that salary or?
No, no, no.
This is just to fill the gaps?
This is to fill the gap.
And to pay Roger his whatever leave and all that?
Yeah, I mean, that's already budgeted.
Okay.
So, that's all took care of. There are just no other money in the EMA budget to take care of whoever we, whoever we hire.
When you hire somebody, when are, when do they start? What part of the remainder of the year would be left?
Right now, every, we conducted their interviews last Friday. We haven't made a decision yet, so, and everybody wants to give two weeks, so we're looking at...
Yeah, so, I guess what I'm asking, Roger's last day's already passed or?
No, we don't know yet.
Okay. I got you.
We haven't got a date yet. So, and we just took a rough number with, I talked with Heather about it, and we just took a rough number for what? Because, I mean, there's no life or anything figured for the new hire, so...
Are you advertising this?
That's what he's wanting to do, is to advertise for that, twenty-five thousand.
And come from the General Fund. If, if it doesn't take all of that, you know, we'll just roll back over.
Any other questions or comments? If not...
No, I don't have a question.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to advertise the twenty-five thousand. Did you say you would run?
Yeah.
Okay. Second? I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Brian. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Next is the final approval on the appropriation from the Correctional Utility, Correctional Utilities Fund, Facilities Fund for the...
Tuesday.
Eighty-seven thirty-one for the sun pit in the elevator shaft.
Sun pit.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion for final approval.
So, move.
Brian, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Ron. All in favor, say aye.
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 And then next would be the final approval for the hundred thousand dollars from the head of fund for the visitor tourism sign project.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on this, on the visitor sign?
Yeah, if you would, give me a minute.
Okay.
I'll look at the minutes, analyze me.
Jerry, just go ahead and hand him to him and he just wants to read him just a minute. You can sign in a few minutes. Just let him read him and then you can sign in a few minutes.
Okay. Either stop or keep going, huh?
Just hand him to him.
Okay. What is happening? No, no, no...
No, you don't need to sign. He's wanting to read it. He's gotta check something off.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm looking at. My apologies. I should have read it before.
It's not my problem. This is for the wafer signage.
Yeah, I know. You even assigned it, Jerry?
Uh, hey, right here's your name, right there. Yeah, right there. Yeah. Get that.
Oh, we said last month.
I'm glad to move on.
Yeah, we said last month. But that was not the best answer.
Pardon?
We just said last month, but that, the hundred thousand was half of the, half of the cost of the...
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
I've read, but I don't need to read.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion for a final approval of the hundred thousand.
Still move.
Okay, Karen, I need a second, please. Second by Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. Randall is no. Okay, thank you.
I got you.
Okay. Up next, Auditor, Additional Approval, uh, Additional Appropriation Final Approval. Sorry, I read that wrong.
I am just here speaking in the final group for the lab services. Financials.
Um, do you want to explain just a little bit about what that is, since we had two members that weren't here last month? What is going on with this?
We currently have Harris Financials, who's our financial system. And it's very outdated. They are almost extinct in Indiana. Most of their clients are in Ohio or Texas. I think there's three counties left in Indiana. So, anytime we have an issue or we need something, it can be days before we get a response. And whenever you're in the middle, okay, well, we don't have days. So, we have looked into two other providers. There's lab services and X-soft. We got demos from each of them and it was just by vote of everybody who has to use it that they preferred luck. They were close to the same price. I sent the pricing around and then I sent the contract around last time. Last thing.
So, are there any other questions or comments? You might explain to them why this is happening right now too.
Oh, yes. And normally, normally they only take on five conversions a year. Next year, they're completely booked, so we wouldn't be able to get on the books until 2027. They actually had a cancellation this year and they can convert us over in October and we would be live by November. So, that's why the big jump on things is happening.
It is.
We're just afraid of wait and hold out.
Yeah, it'll be two years from now.
But eventually here's the real thing. Sorry, we're done.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be stuck.
And it'll cost more.
Yes. We are actually giving a discount if we convert this year.
And did you mention there were two?
Yes.
X-soft and?
X-soft and lab.